All right, so we are reconvening from closed session. And I would like to disclose that there was nothing to report out. And with that, I will adjourn the special meeting at 6:00 P. M. And at this time, I will call to order the regular Elk Grove City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, January the twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is six P. M. Clerk. You're on mute.
Might help if I unmute myself. So thank you, Mayor. Consistent with state law, while a state of emergency remains active, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. The meeting location will be at eight four hundred Laguna Palms Way in the City Council Chamber, but the chamber will not be open to the public. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, January twenty-eighth at one P. M. And Sunday, January thirtieth at six P. M. It is being closed captioned and it'll be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute while you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may be necessary. Pursuant to Resolution number two thousand and ten dash two-four, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. In the Zoom environment, a speaker timer will be displayed, counting down the three-minute time for callers connecting direct via telephone. They can utilize the raise hand feature by pressing star nine on their phone, and the city clerk will run a speaker timer. And after the first two minutes have passed for our phone callers, a single bell ding will sound to inform you one minute remains to summarize comments. When the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. As we are in the teleconference environment, as we move to the roll call for the meeting, any roll call events or any times we take a vote, those will be done verbally. So in the example of the roll call, I will be doing the verbal roll call, starting with Councilmember Wen. Councilmember Wen, are you having our all right time with your sound functions? Oh. And she may have disconnected from the meeting, actually. So currently, I'll have down for absent for Councilmember Wen. I will move to Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Councilmember Wen joined as well.
Here, I was on mute.
And there we were with the mute, and I'll just do the confirmation for the roll call, and we'll check cons here with Councilmember Wen.
Here, thank you. I'm sorry, for some reason, I was not able to hear anything or speak, so I had to log off and log in a different.
Disconnecting is usually a good policy when it comes down to the tech issues that come up. It usually helps everything to reset. But with that, we have our full council form for our regular meeting tonight.
All right, next up, we have our pledge of allegiance. Leading us this evening, I'm going to call on Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please address flag. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Mayor, if I may, before we move into the moment of silence, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Of course.
So obviously, this has been a very tough week in the city of Elk Grove and for the for the community, for the agency, and for the city as a whole. As a survivor of someone who died in the line of duty, I just want to express my sincerest condolences to Officer Ty Lenihan's family, who's certainly his wife Jessica, and his children, Austin and Sydney. And just I ask that, as we have a moment of silence, that we put them in our thoughts. And I would also like to extend condolences to Ty's professional family. And as you have moments of reflection in the coming days and weeks that you employ a little bit of mindfulness techniques, and what that is essentially being aware of your thoughts, much like you would clouds passing overhead, and make sure you let those negative thoughts of anxiety and resentment and frustration blame just pass by, and make special note of the positive thoughts of gratitude and thankfulness and hope. And then I would ask that we certainly close today's meeting in honor of Officer Ty.
Of course. Let us observe our moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Councilmember Hume. I know that was hard, but you captured our sentiments. What we'll do is we'll, I know we will all want to say something about the tragedy that's occurred in our community. And what we'll do is we'll hold off on those comments. We'll save it for the end. But just want to thank you for starting our meeting, of course, in his memory and his honor, and being reflective in our moment of silence, not only today, but in the days to come when the family needs us most. So thank you for that. All right, hard to transition from that. We'll go on to our next item.
Next item, section two, the approval of the agenda.
All right, can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
With the motion in the second, that roll call vote for the approval of the agenda will start with Councilmember Wen.
I.
Councilmember Spees.
I.
Councilmember Hume.
I.
Vice Mayor Suen.
I.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
With a five-o vote, we have an agenda before us.
All right, next item, please.
For section three of the closed session, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda that will advance us to section four, our presentations and announcements. And our one presentation is a very special presentation, item four point one, which is a recognition, David Herberger, an Elk Grove citizen.
All right, I would like to welcome Mr. Herberger to our council meeting and want to talk, you know, just share some of our thoughts here. With, we have a plaque that we'll be presenting to you. I'll hopefully maybe bring it to you in person. But you've just been such a tremendous partner and supporter in our city, so we wanted to, of course, recognize you and celebrate you. So I'll begin, the city of Elk Grove recognizes, appreciates, and honors David Herberger, the president and chief executive officer of Herberger Publications, Inc. Whereas the Herberger family has owned the Elk Grove citizens since nineteen fifty-nine and remained true over six decades to the sentiments of the paper's first publisher, who wrote, "We have confidence in lovely Elk Grove and its enterprising citizens, and we are going right ahead and give them a good live local paper that will be a credit to the town." And whereas, at the time of the purchase of the Elk Grove Citizen and the Gulf Herald from Henry and Louise Tweef, I hope I'm saying it right, the Citizen was celebrating its fiftieth anniversary, having established its first edition on February twentieth, nineteen oh nine. And whereas Herberger Publications, Inc., which published several greater Sacramento-area newspapers, has passed the torch, transitioning the Citizen to the Valley Oak Press. And whereas, as a newspaper family that saw many changes in the communities they served, the Herburgers continuously maintained their dedication to the, to those communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby recognizes and celebrates David Herberger for maintaining and sustaining a vital service of an independent voice in the community, an asset for the community, and thanks him for his resilience and his family's life works in sustaining and bestowing the Elk Grove Citizen to a new generation, signed this twenty-sixth day of January, two thousand and twenty-two.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sure we each will come and say something, but I wanted to pause and turn it over to you, sir, for any comments.
Well, I do appreciate that. First off, on behalf of the entire Herberger and Lewis family, we want to extend our thoughts and prayers to the family of Officer Lenihan. Well, well put. If there is a silver lining in this, it's that the community of Elk Grove is exceptional in its coming together in the face of tragedy and in celebration. So it's one of the best-kept secrets in Sacramento County, and it's always been a pleasure and an honor to participate with all of you, shoulder to shoulder, to make Elk Grove a better place. I just appreciate the opportunity to come out and play. I've had the opportunity to serve with, with you, Mayor, with Vice Mayor Darren, Councilmembers Pat and Stephanie and Kevin in making Elk Grove a better place, and it's just been a blessing and an opportunity. My family, my mom and dad taught me from the age of seven, get to work and get out there and help the community, and that's what we've done. And I just, I can't thank you enough, and I can't thank the community of Elk Grove enough for giving us the opportunity to play and make Elk Grove a better place.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, David, you're tough to read, but I think I hear a tinge of bittersweetness in your voice. And so I know this decision obviously is very meaningful to you. And I will say this, that, you know, the Herberger family and your impact on Elk Grove is indelible. And, you know, you had big shoes to fill when you took over from your dad and your mom. And I think what I appreciate about you most is that you filled them uniquely in your own way. And you took great elements of both of your parents and brought them to the table, and but continued their legacy and made a legacy of your own. And I will say, the last time I saw you in person, now that you have some time on your hands, I'd be happy to, to give you some private auctioneering tutorial. You seem to, you seem to enjoy it almost as much as I do, so. Yeah, great, best of luck to you in whatever you do from here on out. And thank you for all you've done for this community, and I hope that the paper survives for another hundred years.
Councilmember Spees.
There we go. So David, I don't know if I'm going to get through this without crying, my friend. When I, when I heard that you would be moving on, I thought about old Elk Grove, right? And the legacy that your father and your mother and the rest of the family created here in Elk Grove. Many folks may not be aware that your father was extremely instrumental in the organization of Elk Grove Unified School District. You personally have been at so many events where I've been pouring beer. I'm sure you never took a little off the side.
Never, never.
But, you know, it's, it's difficult to see the passage of time. And I really want to thank you for being a great friend, for being an advocate for the community, and making sure that we're notified of what goes on in Elk Grove. And I'll leave it there, so I don't turn into a crying blob, so.
Councilwoman Wen.
Thank you, David. I feel so fortunate to be able to serve on this council and be able to meet you and your family. I remember when I met your dad, he just gave me a hug, and it was so nice to see that I barely knew this man, and, and he gave me this hug, and, and, you know, I've always read the Citizen. And when I finally met you and your family, it was almost like meeting celebrities, right? The folks behind the paper. So thank you for your family lending the voice to Elk Grove. And as Councilmember Hume said, that the legacy that your, your family have left here will always be here. We'll always talk about it, right? Because we were a part of this council, a part of the city when it was under you and your family's legacy. And I know I'll always talk about you and your family, and it was a Citizen, and, and I hope it lives on for another hundred years as well, too. So thank you so much. I hope we run into you, and I hope I attend any event where you're out there doing the auction.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. David, I also want to thank you for your service to our community, and thank you for carrying on the family tradition. You know, there's a lot of kids who don't necessarily continue with the family business, and I think we, this community, would have lost out had you not done that. So your work is certainly very much appreciated. It's always a pleasure seeing you out there. I think a better activity that you, I've seen you enjoy seems to be with that camera. So I hope to continue seeing you out there, taking pictures. And, and, you know, at the Festival of Lights during Christmas time was, I think, the last time I saw you. And again, we just greatly appreciate all your service to the community. Best of luck to you, David.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Wow, the Citizen and the Herberger family, you know, it goes back to my time serving on the school board. Seeing your dad at every board meeting, there in the front row, diligently covering the news of our district, celebrating our students, our programs, giving them the recognition that they just so deserve, but get lost in mainstream media and publications. You kept that hometown feel. And while we're a growing city, we're still a small city, we're still a community of heart, and it's the Citizen that connects us. It connects us. And I so appreciate the role that you've played in Elk Grove, not only in my time on the school board for over eight years, but of course now as mayor, but long before that. The stories, the local folks, our community residents, giving them a voice, connecting us, helping making us the community. Sometimes media plays a very divisive role, but you kept us together. You kept us united, you kept us informed, regardless of the headlines that have come and gone. You kept us as a community, and I so appreciate the role that you've played, carrying the torch from your father and your mother. And I so hope that as graduation season comes, that the publication continues to celebrate our students, being present at every graduation, showcasing them, because it becomes one more keepsake for them. In addition to the yearbook, it's this wonderful coverage of their graduation ceremony. We love that. The community has loved that. The students love that. The parents love that. So thank you for all that you've done to make our city great, and of course, the city of Gulf as well. Because it's also for them. It's a loss for, for all of us. But we wish you the best of luck in your next adventure. I'm sure that, you know, we will all happily play a role in whatever it is that you decide to do. And we, of course, hope and we pray that the publication continues the same spirit of community. I have no doubt, under the new leadership, that that torch that you've passed on will continue that same legacy. Thank you again for all that you've done for our city, and I'll turn it over to you for any closing remarks.
Well, thank you. I, it's tough to, it's tough to follow all that. It's, it's just, it's been a very, it's been tough. But we need new energy, we need new, new vision. And being that I've done this for forty-nine and a half years, muscle memory is a tough thing to overcome. But I can say with, with, with great certainty that Bonnie Rodriguez, who I've worked with over the last two years to take this on, she's a mover and a shaker. She's one of you, and if anybody's going to make it happen, she will. So I guess my final call out is, besides saying, saying thank you to each and every one of you, I've enjoyed working with each of you, shoulder to shoulder, on so many events and whatnot, that my final shout out would be to support local journalism, not only because we cover the, the public trust that's involved, but also showcasing the good things that happen in our community. Big, the national and the international world news is not going to cover what's good, what good people think, what, what people do in Elk Grove and our communities. It's up to us to do that and showcase the good things that happen, and the ministry of humanity, and, and there are good things that happen. And we may have issues that we don't agree with one another, but we can stand shoulder to shoulder and solve the local things and get it done. And like, like Pat said, it's bittersweet, but, you know, we, we got to make it happen, and it's got to move forward. And I've passed on the torch to someone who's got energy, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wishing you continued success.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to our next item, which is public comments.
For our members in the attendee audience, this is section five, our general public comments. This would be the opportunity to use the raise hand function in Zoom to start placing yourself in the queue to speak for general public comment. Members of the participating audience may comment on any item, not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, there were three comments that were written comments submitted prior to the meeting before four P. M. today, and those were circulated to the full council and staff. And as I look over our list of attendees, we do have a few folks that have used the raise hand function, so I will pull up the speaker timer, and we will go from there.
Taryn O'Bad, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
And we may have just lost that individual on the list. They might come back, but I think they got disconnected, it looks like.
Hi, is that me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Taryn. I'm a technology enthusiast. I love technology and have worked immersed in technology my entire career, over twenty-five years. And I'm here tonight to make sure that something's on the radar of the council. It's an exciting opportunity for Elk Grove per new legislation that could allow us to easily give ourselves a great differentiation over other cities and be the envy of Silicon Valley. And that is that now cities such as Elk Grove now have the opportunity to have access to grant and state funding to get the fastest internet to every home, school, and business. There are two new funding opportunities for all California cities, the Grants for Laying Fiber Optic to Homes to Close the Digital Divide per AB one-five-six. The governor signed this, and it appropriate six billion dollars, and we can get a piece of that. Plus, in addition to that, some grants and own our own public utility of open network fiber optic. Open network fiber means multiple carriers can then use it to compete, which will give us lower consumer prices. It's really a beautiful opportunity. It's a game changer. It'll be a boon to our economy, to consumers, because it will reduce prices, and it'll also make it easier for all of us that are working from home, faster connections, we can all be on meetings, multiple meetings, our kids can do their schooling, et cetera. Fiber optic is faster than cellular antenna and even five G. And fiber optic is more secure, it's not vulnerable to electromagnetic pulses or solar flares, and it's not a fire hazard like the antennas are that have caused some of the wildfire disasters throughout our state. Also, more importantly now, fiber optic has a dramatically lower carbon footprint. It is climate friendly because it doesn't have all the raw materials and all of the carbon emissions from all the manufacturing of all of those antennas and all of the equipment cabinets that we see up on poles. That stuff is just not needed when you have fiber optic that comes straight into our homes, our businesses, our government buildings, and our schools, that then goes to our Wi-Fi, and we have all of the wireless inside of our homes. So this is a great opportunity. It could really put us on the map and be a competitive differentiator and reduce costs for everyone, and I'd love to see our council do it. Thank you.
All right, right on cue. Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please.
Theodora Scarrato, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Executive Director of Environmental Health Trust, and this year, we won a major lawsuit confirming that FCC safety limits are not based on a robust review of the science related to cell phone and cell tower radiation. Health agencies like the National Cancer Institute, EPA, CDC, we might think they're monitoring and reviewing the latest science, but they are not. And that was really confirmed in our lawsuit. The research has demonstrated a myriad of adverse effects from wireless radio frequency radiation, including increased brain cancer, DNA damage, oxidative stress, immune dysfunction, altered brain development, which is what got me in, because I'm a clinical social worker, working with kids whose parents use drugs. And I'm very aware, as, you know, I'm sure we all are, about the impact brains, damage reproduction, sleep changes, hyperactivity, and memory damage. So compliance with FCC cell tower radiation limits, they can't be understood as being based on a review of the latest research. To rely on those limits when installing wireless infrastructure opens up serious liability issues. It's market standard for insurance coverage to exclude health damages from wireless radiation in their policies, such as Verizon Total Mobile Protection Plan. They don't cover pollutants, which they define as smoke, chemicals, and so forth, and non-ionizing radiation artificially produced. So last month, a California mother wrote the FCC asking if a cell tower that was built in front of her home was safe. And the FCC lawyer told her that as long as FCC limits were met, the radiation was deemed by the FDA not to show adverse effects in humans. So the mother wrote the FDA and said, well, show me the data. Where's the safety data? And the FDA lawyer wrote back and said, the FDA does not regulate cell towers or cell tower radiation. Therefore, the FDA has no studies or information on cell towers to provide you in response to your questions. Now, the FDA does not have any report that has looked at, for example, the impacts to the brain, to reproduction, to sleep, to DNA damage, to oxidative stress. If the FDA is not evaluating the science, then what agency is? And the answer is no one. That's what our lawsuit really takes the covers off to explain. And sometimes, the scandal in our government is not what is legal, but what is illegal. So I just was testifying to the New Hampshire, the New Hampshire legislator. They are holding hearings on a proposed bill that would ensure a one thousand six hundred forty setback for cell tech, cell antennas, your homes and schools for the entire state. And I sent copious documentation in my email, including the New Hampshire State Commission five G report, which documents how our federal government's regulations are inadequate and the need for federal regulations that are protected. But until that time, experts are recommending reducing exposure as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please.
Julie Levine, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Dear Mayor, Council, and Staff, my name is Julie Levine, and I am an advocate for safe technology. My comments are about the Smart City Plan and all city plans for more radiation transmitting antennas. Long-term exposure to non-ionizing radiation is harmful to humans, as others have shared. The International EMF Scientific Appeal describes many health effects of non-ionizing radiation based on a vast number of scientific studies. As of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, two hundred and fifty-five EMF scientists from forty-four nations have signed the appeal. These scientists have published peer-reviewed papers on the biological and health effects of non-ionizing electromagnetic fields. The scientific findings identified by the signatures and others justify this appeal. The scientists called for the protection from non-ionizing electromagnetic field exposure. And again, based on peer reviewed published research, we have serious concerns regarding the ubiquitous and increasing exposure to EMF generated by electric and wireless devices. These include, but are not limited to, the radio frequency radiation RFR emitting devices such as the cellular and cordless phones and their base stations, wifi, broadcast antennas, smart meters and baby monitors. Numerous recent scientific publications have shown that EMF affects living organisms at levels well below most international and national guidelines. Effects include increased cancer risks, cellular stress, increase in harmful free radicals, genetic damages, structural and functional changes to the reproductive system, learning and memory deficits, neurological disorders, and negative impacts on general well-being in humans. Damage goes well beyond the human race as there is a growing evidence of harmful effects to both plants and animal life. The World Health Organization is encouraged to observe strong leadership in fostering the development of more protective EMF guidelines, to call for precautionary principles, and to educate the public about health risks, particularly risks posed to children and to normal fetal development. By not taking action, the WHO is failing to fulfill its role as the preeminent international public health agency. It is our opinion that adverse health consequences of chronic and involuntary exposure of people to non-ionizing electromagnetic field sources is being ignored by national and international health organizations despite our repeated inquiries as well as inquiries made by other concerned scientists, medical doctors and advocates. This constitutes a clear violation of human rights. To recap, long-term exposure of non-ionizing radiation is harmful to humans. And we urge you for that reason not to, as a city, move forward with smart city plans. Want to point out that Toronto, which is going to do so, stopped also because of concerns about increased surveillance, which is something I know that the Elk Grove Legislature is concerned about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, caller. Next caller, please. Andrea Adler, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Andrea Adler. I just wanted to share a little story. Four years ago, I moved into an apartment in Santa Fe, New Mexico, where nine smart meters were placed on the other side of my bedroom wall. I had no clue of the danger I was about to experience from these digital meters. And after being in the apartment for a week, the radiation was so strong, it fried my brain. It triggered severe tinnitus and the only place I could sleep was in my car. Since then, I have had to move several times to navigate these poisons. Now, four years later, trying to find a place to live off the grid is not easy. I still cannot be close to a fan, a fridge, a telephone or air conditioning without getting a migraine. I cannot walk under a telephone wire without feeling dizzy. I'm now in Mexico to get my teeth repaired as they too were destroyed from the radiation. Funny, I was a Broadway actress, an author of four books, an entrepreneur, a producer, director, screenwriter. The world I am living in now has become very, very small. Arthur Fristenberg, an attorney, advocate and author of the iconic book, The Invisible Rainbow, states in his newsletter, "Radiation acts directly on the electrons in our mitochondria, also metabolism, making us hypoxic and causing diabetes, heart disease and cancer." Radiation also acts directly on all the electric transmission lines in our bodies, including our nerves, our blood vessels, our heart's pacemaker, and even though Western medicine doesn't recognize this existence, our acupuncture meridians. All this plays havoc with life and in just 26 years has wiped out most of the earth's insects, a large percentage of the small birds, and is imminently threatening to put an end to what's left, including us, if we do not put an end to it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in. We'll go to our next caller, please. Mark Dutton, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you for having me on. I recognize some of the names on here and I thank everybody for sharing what they've shared so far. Some of these stories sound almost sci-fi. But, you know, I'm here to say, the burden of proof, of proof of safety is not on us. Okay? It is not on you. It is not on us. It's not on any of us. The burden of safety is on the industry that wants to release this technology on, for, on every inch of our planet and from satellites above, essentially turning the planet into a microwave oven. Speaking of microwaves, I saw on an earlier video that one of your councilpeople, I can't remember which one, mentioned that microwave ovens have been around for a long time and they're, they're safe. Well, they are. That's true unless you stick your head inside it. So the microwave oven will be the atmosphere, you know, the microwave oven is a Faraday cage. So can this, can these, this technology be used safely? Sure, it might be able to. But, again, the burden is on them. That court decision is undeniable. Okay? They lied. They've been lying since 1996. They made it up in 1996. They've been lying ever since. And now they've been proven to be lying. So I'm not a Luddite. I don't think anybody on here is. Okay? We all acknowledge that we evolve and progress happens. But what is progress? You know, if faster video games and download speeds mean the suffering and, you know, of people and insects and animals, or the destruction of all of that, how is that progress? All we're asking, neighborhood councils and local governments, is to understand what you're talking about before you make decisions on this stuff respectfully. Okay? This is a subject that needs a person who is an expert in biology, medicine, EMS science, the history of electricity. It is impossible for us to all make an educated decision about this stuff. So please, find that proof before you move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. We'll go to our next caller, please. Eric Windheim, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. Mr. Windheim, you can go ahead. You just need to unmute. We'll go ahead and come back to you and try again in just a moment. Right, yeah, let's go on to our next caller. Odette Wilkins, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Odette Wilkins, President and General Counsel of Wired Broadband based in New York City. Now, this is a sobering fact. If wireless radiation was so safe, then why won't insurance companies insure for injuries from wireless radiation? Isn't wireless radiation harmless? No, as you've heard. Insurance companies won't insure for wireless radiation and the reinsurers Swiss Re and Lloyds of London have labeled wireless radiation an emerging risk category, similar to pollutants. The World Health Organization in 2011 already classified 2G, 3G wireless radiation from cell phones as a possible human carcinogen. Carriers are required to maintain radiation exposure within the FCC exposure limits. But who's checking? No one, not the FCC. Are you checking for compliance? The FCC's exposure limits far exceed the limits set by other countries for their residents. In fact, the FCC's exposure limits have been called into serious question. As you heard, on August 13, 2021, the D.C. Circuit Court of Appeals, that sits just underneath the U.S. Supreme Court, remanded the exposure limits back to the FCC. The court ruled that the FCC violated the Administrative Procedures Act when it failed to take into consideration the health hazards of wireless radiation well below their exposure limits. This was presented by the thousands of scientific studies and hundreds of accounts of personal injury resulting from wireless radiation well below the FCC's exposure limits. The same court slammed down the FCC in August of 2019. The FCC had violated the National Environmental Policy Act when the FCC failed to conduct the required environmental review of 5G deployment. The court vacated the FCC's 5G deployment order, meaning the court struck down the order. 5G deployments are in violation of this court order. If this wireless radiation was so safe, then why is the court continuously slamming down the FCC and why are insurance companies refusing to provide coverage for radiation injuries? Can your town afford the claims of personal injury from wireless radiation exposure? Do you think the carriers will pay for those injuries? Think again. Any indemnity that a carrier provides is only as good as their insurance. General commercial liability doesn't cover it. Check for their pollution exclusion in their insurance policies. The alternative is fiber optics to the premises, which is what the carriers promise to provide to all Americans. Former FCC Chair Tom Wheeler voiced his dissatisfaction with the carriers for not keeping that promise despite somebody's subsidies when he testified in Congress last year. He said that wireless is the last resort and true future-proof technology is fiber. Don't you want the faster, more reliable, scalable with broadband capacity far beyond 5G economical and energy efficient solution? You can sidestep all of the health hazards that wireless radiation rings with it.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Fiber is your answer.
Thank you for calling in. All right, we'll go on to our next caller, please. Judy Sherman, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. My name is Judy Sherman, a Culver City resident who has been involved with a group of residents in our community raising the issue of dangers of having small cell antennas installations in our residential area. We have been addressing this issue with our city council and staff that is involved with the pending installations proposed directly across the street from residents' windows. To begin with, my orientation to health and healthcare is traditional, having spent over 45 years as a nurse in hospitals and teaching nursing. My views would hardly be considered unorthodox. And so when I was made aware of this issue of safety concerns regarding cell towers, it was new to me. And so I started looking into it and discovered that scientists from around the world have been sounding the health and safety alarms for many years. Their findings have, in many instances, been dismissed by the telecommunications industry. As with all governments, yours is expected to protect the public health of its citizens to the best of your ability and knowledge. To that end, you must address your zoning ordinances, the issue of the proliferation of radiation transmission antennas. As of now, it is missing. Researching and analyzing the scientific studies addressing the health effects of radiation emissions can be daunting and contradictory. However, we are fortunate to have peer reviewed independent analysis of thousands of studies done in an objective way by experts in the field who are anything but anti-technology. As a matter of fact, a very good place for you to review what these experts have found is to look at the findings published by the New Hampshire Commission that studied the health and environmental impacts of wireless radiation. After reviewing thousands of studies, the majority report found various types of negative effects on health, which included non-thermal and not just thermal, which people seem to just focus in on. The research studies were from around the world and not just targeted to one area of the globe. These studies showed impacts on sperm count motility, various neurological problems, changes in the DNA of cord blood, placenta, and it goes on. In the article from the New York Times, November 2010, University of Washington Professor Henry Lee analyzed 326 cellphone radiation studies. He found that only 28% of industry funded studies showed biological effects from cellphone radiation exposure. But that of the studies not funded by industry, 66% found biological effects. Interesting and not surprising, the three individuals on the New Hampshire Commission from the telecom industry.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in. Next caller. Mark Graham, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Staff. Mark Graham from Elk Grove. There were many things in the Smart City Plan that are good, such as the city and the council should listen to and be more responsive to your constituents. I believe you should have been doing that ever since you got on the council. Hidden in between the lines of the Smart City Plan is the thousands of new radiation transmitting antennas that the city will install to collect and disperse all the data that you want. Nobody denied this when I mentioned this two weeks ago. Now, there are two key facts about EMF health effects, and the council has gotten one, but not the other. We presented significant scientific research in 2018 and 2019 in writing, in person, verbally at council meetings over and over and over again. And two of you were not here, Councilmember Spees and Mayor Singh Allen, but the other three of you, you did not get it. So please, I'm asking you to get it tonight. The one fact is that electromagnetic fields affect some people more than others. You've heard that. And the other one is that long-term exposure to electromagnetic fields is harmful to human health. That's why we shouldn't, that's why we should exercise caution. All right. This is a document that's published on PubMed, the website of the U.S. National Institutes of Health, in September 2016, the Europa EMF Guideline. I'm going to read you some quotations. Chronic diseases and illnesses associated with nonspecific symptoms are on the rise. New wireless technologies and applications have been introduced without any certainty about their health effects, raising new challenges for medicine and society. For instance, the issue of so-called non-thermal effects and potential long-term effects of low dose exposure were scarcely investigated prior to the introduction of these technologies. It should be noted that during the last 20 years, more than 20 position papers and resolutions regarding EMF and health have been adopted by EMF researchers and physicians. These include the Vienna EMF Resolution, Austria, 1998, Stewart Report, United Kingdom, 2000, Salzburg Resolution, Austria, 2000, Freiburg Appeal, Germany, 2002, Catania Resolution, Italy, 2002, Irish Doctors Environmental Association Statement, Ireland, 2005, Helsinki Appeal, Finland, 2005, Benevento Resolution, Italy, 2006, Venice Resolution, Italy, 2008, Porto Alegre Resolution, Brazil, 2009, Russian National Committee on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection Resolution, Russia, 2001, International Doctors' Appeal, Europe, 2012, and the Report of the Standing Committee on Health, Canada, 2015. To recap, long-term exposure to non-ionizing radiation is harmful to humans. It is not, as Councilmember Hume claimed, an affliction that we do not know about. It is scientifically proven to be harmful to your health. Please take this into account.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Graham, for calling in. We'll go to our next caller. David Cairo, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Elk Grove City Council members and staff. My name is David Cairo and I'm a resident of Culver City, California. I'm speaking here today regarding the Elk Grove Smart City Plan. I read through the 65-page PDF and noticeably amidst the thousands of new radiation transmitting antennas that the plan will bring, and those antennas are not mentioned in the plan or the resolution. The effects of 5G small cells, which are installed very close to homes, schools and playgrounds, are very harmful to humans, animals and plant life. There are many studies that show that non-ionizing radiation, aka EMF, is harmful to human beings according to lots of scientific research which was discussed earlier today. I urge the government of Elk Grove to hold off on any Smart City Plan until all of the details regarding 5G and dangerous EMF has been studied. Regarding the topic of smart cities, this is an unproven concept that has received lots of PR, mainly driven by technology companies looking to capitalize on this trend. I have been an IT professional over two decades and I have heard the concept of connected smart cities over my entire career. In 1994, Amsterdam created a virtual digital city to promote internet usage. 2005, Cisco put up $25 million over five years to research into smart cities. 2008, 2008, IBM Smarter Planet Project investigated applying sensors, networks, and analytics to urban issues. 2009, IBM unveiled $50 million Smart Cities campaign to help run cities more effectively. All of these projects have made no impact and were mostly used as marketing materials for the tech industry. The current smart city designs include lots of measures that violate citizen privacy by monitoring their every move with traffic and street cameras, sophisticated algorithms which make decisions based on unproven computer code, and outsourced responsibility of running the city to third-party companies which do not have the citizen's best interests in mind. I urge you to look past marketing and dive deep into the details on any smart city plan that you will be reviewing to determine if it's truly the best move forward for Elk Grove citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. We will go to our next caller.
Lena Barris, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council and the mayor. I'm going to repeat some of the things that other callers already have talked about, which is the dangers of non-ionizing EMF radiation. There is an international EMF scientist appeal, which is a petition signed by 421 scientists and doctors today, who all have published peer-reviewed research on EMF biology and health, totaling over 2,000 papers and letters in professional journals. It states simply, "We, the undersigned scientists and doctors, recommend a moratorium on the rollout of the fifth-generation 5G for telecommunications until potential hazards for human health and the environment have been fully investigated by scientists independent from industry. 5G will substantially increase exposure to radio frequency electromagnetic fields on top of the 2G, 3G, 4G, Wi-Fi, et cetera, for telecommunications already in place. RF EMF has been proven to be harmful for humans and the environment." The scientific basis for the collective concern is numerous recent scientific publications that have shown that EMF effects leaving organisms at levels well below most international guidelines. This is some of the latest part. Increased cell growth of brain cancer cells, a doubling of the rate of lymphoma in mice, changes in tumor growth in rats, an increased number of tumors in rats, increased single and double-strand breaks in DNA, our genetic material, two to four times as many cancers in Polish soldiers exposed to RF, more childhood leukemia in children exposed to RF, changes in sleep patterns and REM-type sleep, headaches caused by RF microwave radiation exposure, neurologic changes, including changes in the blood-brain barrier, changes in cellular morphology, including cell death, changes in neural electrophysiology, which is EEG, changes in neurotransmitters which affect motivation and pain perception, changes in neurotransmitters which affect motivation and, I'm sorry, metabolic changes of calcium ions, for instance, cytogenic effects which can affect cancer, Alzheimer's, neurodegenerative diseases, et cetera, decreased memory, attention, and slow reaction time in schoolchildren, retained retarded learning in rats indicating a deficit in spatial working memory, increased blood pressure in healthy men, damage to eye cells when combined with commonly-used glaucoma medications. Knowing this.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you so much for calling in. We will go on to our next caller, please.
Eric Windham, we'll give it a try here. If you want to go ahead and unmute, you can go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Eric Windheim. I live in Sacramento. I'm a graduate of UC Santa Barbara. I am a trained and certified building biology environmental consultant, a trained and certified electromagnetic radiation specialist. And then, two years later, in 2018, I became a graduate of the IEEE Certified Radio Frequency Safety Officer Course. That course teaches the doctrine and dogma of everything that the FCC espouses, and it's all based on thermal damage. Your body has to heat up 1.8 degrees Fahrenheit for any damage to occur. Okay, now, people call me when they hurt at home, they feel better when they leave, and they get back home and they hurt. Some of my clients have spent $1.5 million trying to feel well at home. So I have actually received hundreds and hundreds of referrals from medical doctors. And when I go out to the house to detect, measure, assign a risk level, and propose or effectuate solutions, sometimes people, autistic children, they respond instantly. The pain stops the minute I turn off the source of the radiation. Of course, in the case of cell towers or small cells or other wireless transmitters, you can't turn them off because they're situated high in the air or they're on public property. Just this week, I was at a 60-year-old physically fit soccer coach who races bicycles in his spare time, and he cannot stand in his backyard more than 10 minutes before he gets cardiac arrhythmia. I watched it happen to him. I helped a, he's going to have to move or spend 20 grand shielding his house. I'm helping another woman up in Folsom. She's got two cell towers, 1,000 feet away, another one 5,000 feet away. She's spent $20,000 shielding her home. And this goes on and on and on. And what's really interesting is none of these people complain about overheating, which is what the FCC is your only risk. They all talk about neurological impairment, headaches, fatigue, insomnia, pressure in the head, heart palpitations, trips to the emergency room, agitation, anxiety, irritability, depression, and even suicidal thoughts. When I helped one man, he said, "Thank you, Eric. I'm back in my right mind now." So if you want to have a smart city, I think the smartest thing to do would be avoid using wireless radiation and putting antennas all over town, particularly in front of people's homes or at schools. And this is what I do for a living, and people have hired me to go all over the United States, and I have worked for hundreds of doctor referrals right here in Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for calling in. Are there any other callers?
And as I take my attention over to the attendee listing in the Zoom environment, I do not see the raised hand feature being utilized. That's going to conclude our public comment for Section 5.
We'll go ahead and close the public comments and go on to our next item.
The next item takes us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council. Jason Berman, your City Manager. First, I want to just say a few words about Officer Lenehan and what's happening at the city to honor his memory. City staff remain focused on supporting the Lenehan family and the men and women of our police department following his tragic death last Friday. We want to thank everyone who showed up for yesterday's procession and invite the community to attend a candlelight vigil for Officer Lenehan tomorrow night, January 27, at the Police Department 8380 Laguna Palms Way at 6:30 PM. For those who cannot attend the vigil but still wish to pay the respects, the memorial for Officer Lenehan will remain on display through next Tuesday in the Police Department lobby. Visitors can stop by anytime between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Many residents have asked us how they can support the department during this difficult time. To that end, the community can help in the following ways. Either giving to the memorial fund established for Officer Lenehan's family through the CHCP Credit Union. All donations will go directly to the family. The link to the fund can be found on the Police Department's Facebook page. Providing notes, cards, and other letters of support for snack bags given out to officers attending the memorial service. These messages can be dropped off at the Police Department Service Center during normal business hours through Monday. And volunteers with the End of, you can also volunteer with the End of Watch Fund to provide support services. Visit www-endofwatchfund.com to sign up to volunteer. The memorial service for Officer Lenehan is scheduled for next Tuesday, February 1, at 10:00 AM at Bayside Church Adventure Campus in Roseville, 6401 Stanford Ranch Road. This service is open to the public. Regarding some other items, just a reminder, the city continues to accept applications for four city grant programs that support nonprofit activities taking place from July 1 through June 30. A technical workshop was conducted yesterday to provide assistance to prospective applicants. That workshop recording and more information about the program is available at elkgrovecity.org/grants. Residents are encouraged to provide their feedback on improvements to Laguna Creek Interregional Trail by participating in an online workshop through February 6. Residents can review an interactive map, take a survey, and share their opinion on design features and contribute to a funding exercise. Visit lagunacreektraildesign.com for more details. An update on the zoo, where it continues on the zoo feasibility study being prepared by RSNS in consultation with the Sacramento Zoological Society and City of Elk Grove. A draft of the feasibility study is expected to be available for public review and comment in March. To learn more about the zoo project or to sign up to receive email updates, please visit the city's website at elkgrovecity.org/zoo. Nominations are now being accepted for the mayor's volunteer awards to recognize exceptional community volunteers in several categories. Residents can submit their nomination online on the city's website or at City Hall by March 11. The Police Department is accepting registration for the next Citizens Academy beginning on February 22. This free 10-week program shares the various aspects of local policing with the community. Meetings will be held on Tuesday evenings from 6 to 9 PM at the Elk Grove Police Department. Details are available on the Police Department website. And finally, the point-in-time count of unsheltered people experiencing homelessness in Elk Grove will be conducted on Thursday, February 24. Community volunteers play an important role in capturing this data. Please register with Sacramento Steps Forward at sacramentostepsforward.org to participate in the count. Make sure to specify that you want to join the Elk Grove Count on February 24. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Thank you for that great report. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, thank you again, Mr. Berman. We'll move on to our next item.
I guess to Section 7, the Consent Calendar Items. For our members in the participating Zoom environment, this will be the opportunity to speak on general public comment for the consent calendar items. You'd use that raise hand function. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in relation to the consent calendar. As I go back over our listing of attendees in the Zoom environment, I do not see the raised hand function being used. That will conclude public comment for the consent calendar.
All right, then I will close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion unless there's any questions.
Motion Consent, Spees.
Hume, second.
There we have a motion in a second.
With the motion in the second, that roll call vote will start with Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Consent calendar items will pass 5-0.
All right, on to our next item.
The next item is going to take us to Section 8, our public hearings. And that item is 8.1, the first of our public hearings, which is a public hearing providing an overview of the redistricting process. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I am Jason Lindgren, your City Clerk, and I'm just going to pull up a presentation as we roll through this introduction to the redistricting process that will be kicking off here in the end of January and then heading on through February and March. Just give me one moment. So for this process, we actually started these discussions at our last meeting. What was probably the biggest change is that we do have a change in our support that we're receiving. We were going to be going with one firm. They contacted the city and informed us that they would not be able to proceed, but we are working to get under, to work with a company, National Demographics Corporation. That's a familiar name. You might have heard that they were the demographer firm that assisted with Sacramento County as well as the Elk Grove Unified School District as they've gone through their redistricting processes. What this will be is just an initial taste of kind of the numbers that we've seen come out, some initial discussions about what redistricting is and what its purpose is. And this goes over the overview, that redistricting process, what some of the comparison data that came out from our initial view. And I'll have some comments about data as well, and we'll see that as it changes over time with slight tweaks. Again, we'll go over that project timeline, but I'd like to share kind of some of the, kind of what we're envisioning from the staff perspective of how we'll be able to get out into our community or outreach into our community, whether it's teleconference or pop-up events or other events as we may be able to imagine in our minds. But to be able to use districting tools that are out there and available online and how we're going to look to craft some of those with an Elk Grove flavor to get folks having a discussion about what are our communities of interest? What are the areas that we identify in terms of having a place, a sense of place, a sense of service, a sense of representation? And that we'll use those types of feedback to come back and look at our overall redistricting process. When we talk about redistricting, it's a requirement that agencies look after a decennial census comes out. We just had the census numbers come out at the end of September of 2021, which is generally a little bit later in the process. We've seen a lot of our neighbor agencies going through the redistricting process as they have had an earlier timeframe in order to get their work done, in which they were targeting for the end of 2021 in order to have their boundaries established for the June primary that's coming up. Elk Grove with a little bit of wiggle room. We have until mid-April to get our maps completed so that we have our maps set away and standardized with Sacramento County to be used in the November 2022 election. Really, when we're talking about redistricting, it's taking the number of districts. So for Elk Grove, we have four districts, and you're trying to get them in nearly equal population as possible in order to create those representative districts that move forward. When the process happens, you're going to be looking at these, looking at trying to keep that balance of population. But ultimately, they're also drawn by making sure that communities of interest remain together. And we'll have that discussion about what are communities of interest for Elk Grove going on throughout January, February, and into March as we talk about how do the numbers start matching up with what we experience in our community as residents within Elk Grove. When we look at the maps for election district boundaries, they're based on a total population count from the census data. But what we're also coming to, what you'll be seeing as time goes on, is that along with the census data, the California statewide database also adds numbers. And the numbers that they add and the methodologies that they use are to be folded in and are legally required to be included as part of our process. So to date, the numbers that staff have presented to the council and to the community, and in fact, the numbers that are inside of this staff report are the numbers purely from the census. And what you'll see as time goes on is you will see tweaks in our numbers as we work through the redistricting process and we take into account the data that comes from the California statewide database. So you'll see these slight increases. What we can see tonight is we can see the general trend that happened over the period of 10 years. But as we look at both the data sources from the California statewide database, but also dig in just with GIS, how lines are drawn and how geometry pulls in numbers, we may see some slight derivations that occur from the total number counts we see. But these are good approximates. They're from the census data. It's just there's some other tweaks that we'll see as time goes on in the process. In addition, we've talked and touched base about the state redistricting process has added some additional requirements. So we'll be having these discussions as we go forward into the months of February and March and into April as we get to having the public hearings that are required under state law. But state law also had some changes and added some words to kind of the aspects of what we look for when we do the actual redistricting process. So redistricting, those drawing criteria, one of the first elements is about that total population count, is that we're trying to create four districts for Elk Grove that are near as population as possible. Sometimes what you'll hear in those discussions is that plus or minus 5%. Some of our districts, as we get to final maps, maybe have a little bit more in population, some a little less, but we want to make sure that that deviation doesn't stray too far. And usually, that's a general rule of thumb that we stay within that plus or minus 5% realm. But what about drawing the districts themselves? This comes straight from our state law in our elections code, and it creates these criteria that are actually listed in a priority as you work your way down, and that they give preference to the top priorities, and then you start looking at these other factors to consider. But the main elements is that when you look at these districts, you're looking at that geographic, geographically contiguous. And so you're trying to make it so that you don't have these pieces that have strange pinching points. You're trying to get something that's cohesive. Districts should respect the integrity of local neighborhoods, and this is really the community of interest discussion is what we're endeavoring on here at the end of January and into February. It's to reach out into our community and find out what are those communities of interest? And where is it on our map and where our census blocks reside? What are those? What are those areas that we find that should be housed within a representative district? And really what we're doing is looking at these abilities so that these aren't absolutes. And you'll see these words such as minimizing divisions or trying to get minimizing these separations. Because at the end of it, it's a mathematical puzzle. You'll see as we get in and talk about a little bit more about blocks is that sometimes those pieces of the blocks or even from the the smaller divisions within the of the census numbers. You don't want to break those up so much. And so it's an interesting puzzle. We'll see that with a little bit of painting that I'll be doing a little bit later. District boundaries should be easily identifiable. And this was one that definitely resonated as we've gone through this process, when we went through this process back in two thousand and eleven. And that's using often our boulevards in Elk Grove are great delineators for going through highway ninety nine is one of those. You know, artificial barrier, but then you start talking about some of our creek weights and pathways. There are some natural barriers and it's kind of neat because you can take these map tools that we're going to be seeing a little bit later. And you can actually diminish them down and say, show me where there's zero census population. Because it's kind of an odd thought. At first you say, how could there be zero population? But in geographic space, when you're talking about wherever there's a shopping center, wherever there's schools, parks, creeks that go through a community, you actually get these segments and parts of the puzzle that are zero population. And they make really natural bounder, good natural boundaries that could be consideration when you're going into this process of district. Last for the state requirements is the district should be geographically compact. And so this is kind of a new element in which they're saying, you know, you don't want to have for where you have a community and they're being put together. When you start looking at the final district lines, you don't want to get into this area where you're just putting someone into different district just because it balances out the numbers. There's sometimes you want to give a little bit of deeper thought and we'll get into kind of how that the flipping of numbers and how we sometimes get what looks like a map and then all of a sudden it looks as though there's kind of a gapped piece that gets moved. It gets away from that idea of being compact. Numbers are a great part of any redistricting process. And these are the numbers that are also housed within the staff report. Now remember, these numbers are purely from the census. So when we talk about Elk Grove numbers using the California statewide database, you're going to see an increase in numbers because typically what's happening with the statewide database is they're going to have a formula for adding additional number counts of population to areas throughout the state of California. And so generally the numbers from the statewide database, I think we're going to be in a realm when you're looking at that total number for two thousand and twenty. We're at one hundred and seventy six thousand, one hundred and twenty four residents. The statewide database is going to cause a variation that's probably going to be of a magnitude of about four hundred to six hundred additional residents counted as the population for the city of Elk Grove. So when you're looking at our comparison with two thousand and ten, you can just get a sense of what's that number growth? What's that percentage growth that's occurred? And I think an interesting trend that if we look back and looked at the process that we went through in two thousand and eleven is that typically what we've found is that when we draw districts and those districts still have large special plan areas that have not built out. We're seeing that when those do build out between that period of the ten years between when we do the census, that's where we're seeing growth. When you have districts that don't have large expanses of planned areas for growth, they're going to stay a little more static. They're not going to grow as voluminously. As you can see in our example here, look at Council District Four had the largest area with Laguna Ridge still being at the level that it was developed back in two thousand and ten compared to now in two thousand and twenty. That's where we're seeing the most new homes built and you're seeing those population increases being shown over the course of a decade. Which is sort of interesting because as we look at these numbers, you might want to be considering, well, when we draw maps, what do we want to do with the areas and expanses within the city of Elk Grove that actually have planned areas? They're expected for growth. We just don't know when that might come depending on the conditions that are in the economy of when the housing is being provided. And then we want to be thoughtful of where we drop, you know, an area that currently has no residents. But when we talk about our census results, don't forget that it's two thousand and twenty. So this is a snapshot from April first, two thousand and twenty. And when we talk about Elk Grove, we've already had growth in some of our districts from that point of April of two thousand and twenty to now almost two years of the process when we're coming up with our district maps. So we're already two years into data and that's out of date for what's going to then span for the next eight years for the city of Elk Grove. When we go through the numbers, one of the interesting ones that comes out, and this was one that we did in a comparison, I believe is a two thousand and seventeen or two thousand and eighteen. But there's a term called VAP, which is voting age population. And one of the fascinating elements I've found with redistricting is that the purpose of redistricting is to create representative districts, but you always do that count by total population, not by the number of registered voters. There's a little bit of a intellectual disconnect that I've found with the process because you're doing by pure population count, not necessarily by who actually is electing someone within a given district. One of the interesting things about V A P is that it's the voting age population gives you a sense as well about what is going to happen in the next ten years within a given district. If you're going to be looking at a voting age population, you have, you know, your percentage is actually decreasing down. It's interesting to think about what might happen in ten years because you have potentially a generation of a lot of kids that could be turning over the age of eighteen by the time you get to the twenty thirty census. And that's going to have an effect on where our total numbers are. But what you'll see is some comparisons that occur. So when people are talking about total population, but then eighteen and over. So if you wanted to do the math and subtract out, you know, we're looking at forty five thousand kids running around in Elk Grove anywhere aging from zero to eighteen, which is kind of fun, just thinking about the youth of a. One of the attachments that we have was just a diagram to display some of these changes from our four council districts. And looking at that data of the voting age population. And it's kind of interesting to see that when you talk about voting age population and total counts, this gives that visual display of how much growth has been occurring within District Four. But when you look citywide and you look kind of at the interesting elements about voting age population for most of our districts of one, two and three, you're talking about it's you're seeing that kind of twenty five percent being at the age of of the voting age population of people not being above the voting age population, right? And so when you look at District Four, now that's turning into more like a thirty percent. So instead of twenty five percent, there's thirty percent and you have a lot of youth that are residents within our District Four. But it's also an interesting comparison because you're also now looking at this from District Four being a larger district as it currently resides with the district boundaries that we have. I'm only going to very briefly touch on total population demographics. And that is because the target is at our February ninth meeting, we will be inviting National Demographics Corporation to give their analysis from the demographer perspective of what is the composition within the city of Elk Grove. But with that, we can still pull up these numbers from the two thousand and twenty census. And again, this is not adjusted for the statewide. But this gives you a sense of where we've seen growth in Elk Grove where the numbers change in that comparison from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty. And I think one of the elements, it's always interesting when you look at it, given census is that census, the manner in which the census gathers information changes from census to census. And sometimes it's an interesting element about how questions are asked and what the results are from any given census. And we see some fluctuations that go on, but it's also helping us to inform what is the the composition of our community. And we'll look forward in February to be having more of that discussion about composition in our community as that's one of those great indicators for giving us a sense of are there some communities of interest that we're seeing within the city of Elk Grove? But stay tuned for that one. That's going to be on in February. So the redistricting project timeline is this is just an introduction of the numbers. And it starts to get our community starting to think about how would we draw lines? And before you even start thinking about drawing lines, it's really that element of communities of interest and what logically makes sense. Where do we see in our community those, the lines that will be drawn? Are there clear delineators? Are there clear areas where we know that we want to have representation? We want to have service that's provided. And it makes sense to have these various districts created in our four district configuration. As we move through in February, this is February is really going to be our discussion about communities of interest. And where is it in Elk Grove that we see these centers of these communities that we want to keep bound together within a district? And that's really going to be the brunt of February, which is talking about how do we want the maps to be drawn? And then when we get to March, that's when we'll actually start looking at maps that get drawn and get submitted and come to us and we have a chance to look at them. And so really in February, I think of it as not only just thinking about what are the communities of interest, but it's a good time to be pondering what are the actually our criteria that we want to find as a community for ways that we can draw these maps and get to an equitable distribution within the city so that we have representative districts. Really, the target that becomes hard for us is April. So our first meeting in April is when we really want to be looking towards concluding the process. What will be happening throughout the month of February is as part of the staff reports that come forward as the public hearings held throughout February will be an update. How many in the community have been contacted? What outreach has been done? What opportunities there've been for teleconference meetings or in person meetings? Depending on the comfort levels and the ability for us to hold pop up events. One of the really nice elements is that we have an amazing set of technology compared to what we had ten years ago. Just our ability to have teleconference meetings such as this, sharing information, sharing screens. This would have been pretty jumpy back in the days of two thousand and eleven. And it's actually a really amazing element that though we have the challenge of the pandemic and of orders that maybe tell that based on the orders, we may not be able to have in person meetings in buildings. We can still do this outreach via teleconference and we can still meet if we're able to set up events for folks that are pop up events in our outdoor venues that we have such as District Fifty Six, such as the out at Old Town and finding other locations that are throughout the community, various park sites that as long as people have a laptop or a tablet, we might be able to to make some outreach happen for them. And really the intent from staff is to start the process with outreach to our groups and our community and to meet them on their terms so that the meetings aren't going to be occurring as a set. What we're going to ask them is what works best for our community? And we will have some set meetings to invite open door to the whole community. But if there's an opportunity to hold teleconference meetings, to touch base with groups and get them flying with the tools that we have, then that's the hope that we will get some great participation and activation in our communities to come forward with ideas. This is all part of the proposed work model. When we talk about this outreach and the methods, one of the things that I do want to do is stop sharing my presentation because I want to give a quick glimpse of the tool that we're looking for helping to bring to our community. It's an online tool that allows people to go in, draw up some maps and then submit them electronically. And they all head right over towards the city of Elk Grove. And we basically can put them in the hopper and get them processed from the staff and consultant side. So what I'd like to do is just jump out and really quickly give you an overview. The caveat on this, this is not the Elk Grove specific program. It'll use the same basis. The one that I'm going to be displaying is the one that was used with Sacramento County, but it'll give you a sense of how this works. And just one moment. All right, this should be a familiar image. It's Sacramento County. So what's really neat is this is a webpage. It is a program called Districter. So it's a district with the letter R at the end of it. And what we are working on is having Elk Grove set up as an event that basically our our community can participate in. What's nice about this program is that when you look at kind of the lines that are on here, and this one's drawn specifically for Sacramento County. But what you'll see is where that the compaction of the little blocks is where there's higher density of residents. And so it's you really get this sense of the density that's required in the city, but also where those open spaces are that occur within a jurisdiction. And again, as this is the program for Sacramento County, what you're going to see when we move to the Elk Grove product is it's going to show the city boundaries that go outside. And we'll have some additional layers if people want to put those on. But when you look at these maps just directly online, it really gives you a raw image of how do you see the community coming together? And you can build from there. What's really nifty about this is that then from here, because in the census and the way that the census blocks are built, and that's part of what the attachment maps were in the staff report was showing these lines of where you get to the small census, the smaller census units than moving up into the block groups is that as you're moving together, the the communities of interest are using the the kind of guidelines of how to draw districts. You don't want to be splitting these census blocks up. You you want them to move as groups. And so what's neat about this program is that it gives you an opportunity. I might have to just move my move some pieces around. But in this instance, if you're drawing and you're starting to put in where you think there's a community of interest or where you believe a district line will eventually go. What this program is going to do is as I'm holding down the mouse, it starts filling in those sections of this district. And not only is it filling in these numbers, but this is the beauty of geographic information systems where it's taking data and it's taking it from a geometric spatial area. And you'll see that as I fill in the numbers, it's going to start filling in population data over onto the right. So as our residents are putting these kind of maps together, you get this ability to draw into the pictures. If I mess up, I can always go back and just take a few of those things out. And it gives you this power to get an instant number of whether or not the map that you're proposing has that balance of population. And what we also plan to see with this is having the data layers that then our residents can also look at what is the what is the demographic breakdown within the district that they're drawing? And when you do this, you can start drawing up all your districts and start putting them together. And then we can get to also having other colors for other districts. And so as you start putting all these together, it's a really neat methodology in which you can go in and really dig down into how these are being put together. But you also have that ability to move back, look at the map and at first look for just those communities of interest. We'll actually have a module that's both for filling in a final district map. But there'll also be one that is just to identify communities of interest first. And we'd like to see the community jump into those and see those areas that they want to keep together and then go from there building. But it's kind of a, it's a fun tool. It's a, it's like having pens and paper on your computer and you're swishing it around with a with a mouse. And what's nice about it is that we've got a lot of resources and support that we can give folks to just give them the tutorials to put these tools in their hands and they can submit maps as they wish. So should be kind of fun in that regard. But I believe that gets getting actually to the end of my presentation. Really, the main element of beyond this tool that we'll be having is our clearinghouse that we'll be keeping on the city website for redistricting. And it really is to be the driver for us to not only get this tool published out to our community for them to do the district drawing, but it's also to set up those meetings and to keep a chronology of where we're going in this process. I'm hoping to come back to our February ninth meeting with a lot of information about contact points that I've been making out in the community. But we also will be having a little bit more of an in depth look about the demographics of Elk Grove and then share some initial feedback that we're getting from our residents just in terms of what they see as criteria for drawing maps or those communities of interest that they're starting to identify. And with that, I'm open for questions.
All right. Thank you for that very thorough presentation. Before we go to council questions, I'll open up the public hearing. And open up the public comment opportunity.
And as I look, this would be the opportunity for our participants in the Zoom environment to use the raise hand function to provide public comment for our public hearing on item eight point one. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item eight point one. As I take my attention back to our list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. That will conclude public comment on this item.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. And open it up for council deliberation and direction. I will go ahead and start with Councilmember Spies. Any questions, comments?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question, Jason. The Districter tool looks different than the tool that I I got fairly comfortable using when the county was going through their redistricting process. Are we going to have that other tool available? I can't remember the name of the program unfortunately, but.
By any chance, was it the name of someone and the app name? Like Dave's app or something like that? Does that sound familiar? But what I.
No.
Okay, what I can do is I can, I can get in contact because it's National Demographics Corporation is going to share a common thread. And so I think what you may have been utilizing was the tool that they provide. And I'll be working with them to see if we can give a variety of tools for folks. I know that Districter was out and available for Sacramento County and so for I think for some of our residents. And so for I think for some of our residents, it'll be a familiar tool as well.
Okay.
My, you know, more tools in the toolkit are always better, in my opinion.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Win.
Thank you, ma'am. Nope, I don't have any questions. Thank you for the the presentation. I I look forward to seeing how our community members get involved. I know I was involved with a couple of maps myself and sending in comments and whatnot. And so I hope that our community members really take part in this and give us some ideas. And then I I just want to end by saying District 41 again, once again, we won.
Vice Mayor, soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, no questions or comments other than Jason, I'm glad you're you're leading this. I I have a lot of faith in you. You you're extremely knowledgeable in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a series of comments. I very actively participated in the statewide just redistricting process. Submitting comments and testimony along the way. So and then, of course, follow the county one and now it's it's our turn. So I, you know, obviously, some of our challenges are with COVID and the limited, the limitations we have with time and our outreach. Our outreach efforts, I know it'll be as robust as it can be given the the restrictions. So it is also my plea to the community to be involved in this process. I was happy to see in the staff report, there are a number of outreach methods that we that you outlined. Most importantly and compelling, I thought, was of all of our existing community committees and commissions, where we have very diverse groups, communities of interest, if you will, with with the planning commission using that lens, the diversity and inclusion commission using that lens, our trails committee, committee. So we have a built-in platform that I'm great grateful for. Given our limitations with doing a more hands-on, in-person outreach, that we do have a very diverse and talented group of residents that are already actively engaged in this process. So we will be getting feedback for sure, at least through through all of them. And of course, I I have faith that the news or the newspaper publication will also communicate the need of getting involved in all of our various other social media and website channels as well. And along with all of us as ambassadors of our communities to ensure that our residents are participating so that the map that is drawn really reflects for the most part keeping communities of interest intact. And they all, everyone feels like they had a say along the way. So thank you, your great staff report. Yeah, very, very thorough. So thank you again for that and I look forward to our next reading on this subject.
Excellent. And I just have some last comments, which is from Elk Grove, the perspective of our staff and the efforts that went through, just with the census effort, is the great response from Elk Grove. And we plan to work with those folks that assisted in the census to provide some feedback and places to work. And I would be remiss if I did not call out our staff members, Carrie Whitlock and Lona Braswell. They're geniuses and they do some really fun stuff and they are amazing at what they do and they're bringing it to the table. And I really appreciate their support and and the hand that they're lending in this process, so.
Yes, couldn't agree more. Thank you for reminding us of that. All right, no other questions, we'll move on to our next item.
And that next item will be item 8.2. And that is going to be for six public hearings and consider the resolutions for calling various special elections for our community facilities, districts, our street maintenance zones and stormwater drainage fee zones.
Jason, can you hear me okay and see my screen okay?
Indeed, we do have full visuals and audio and visual, please proceed.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the City. I'm here this evening with the presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. The city maintains eight special tax districts which provide funding for infrastructure or for services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project according to the geographic location and building use. The special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. On December 8, 2021, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the parcels for the railroad street rehabilitation project and the 10069 and 10087 Bond Road tentative parcel map project into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearings. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts. CFD 2003 dash two for police and public safety services. CFD 2006 dash one for maintenance services. Street, street maintenance, District 1, Zone 3 for local collector and arterial street maintenance in that zone. And stormwater drainage B zone two for stormwater drainage and runoff maintenance. This is the 59th annexation into CFD 2003 dash two. The 75th and 76th annexations into CFD 2006 dash one. The 43rd annexation into street maintenance, District 1, Zone 3. And the 48th and 49th annexations into stormwater drainage B zone two. And all of these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. More specifically about the projects, the first project is a railroad street rehabilitation project which consists of two non-residential acres located southeast of Elk Grove Boulevard and Elk Grove Foreign Road. And the second project is the 10069 and 10087 Bond Road tentative parcel map, which consists of three single-family residential units located near the northwestern intersection of Bond Road and Grantline Road. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you for that report. I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2003 dash two, Annex 59 now open. And open the public comment opportunity.
Well, unmute myself first. For attendees in the Zoom audience, this is going to be the opportunity to provide public comment on item 8.2. We will open public comment opportunities in various moments because there are multiple public hearings. And so if you wish to address any of these items, you'll have an opportunity to use the raised hand feature. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, there were no written comments that were submitted for any of the public hearings in relation to item 8.2 prior to the meeting. As I take my attention over and that that statement will hold for the next six opportunities for speaking. Because we have a lot of public hearings to go through. As I look at our list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function being used for CFD 2003 dash two. And that'll conclude public comment on that item.
All right, thank you. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2003 dash two, Annex 59 is now closed.
Motion A1.
Yep.
Second, Sue.
We have a motion and a second.
And for the roll call vote, I will start on motion A1 with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution A1 will pass 5-0.
All right, I'd like to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Of three possible votes, three affirmative votes for cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy the special tax at the rate a portion described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure and a resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Motion A2, Hume.
Second, Sue.
And for the roll call vote on motion A2, I will start with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
That motion of A2 will pass 5-0.
Move to introduce the waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to community facilities District Number 2003 dash two. Police Services Annexation Number 59 and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3 dot 18 dot 010.
Second.
With the motion and the second for the ordinance of motion A3, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Ordinance of motion A3 will pass 5-0.
All right.
Motion B1.
What's that?
We're almost there.
Oh, I gotta, I gotta open up.
Open up some public hearings and close.
All right, so I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2006 dash one, Annex 75 now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And no written comments. I'm looking over our list of attendees. No raised hand function being utilized. That'll conclude public comment for CFD 2006 dash one, Annex 75.
All right, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006 dash one, Annex 75 is now closed.
And I believe we have a motion and a second from a motion from Hume and a second from Win for motion B1, the resolution. With that, that roll call vote will start with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of B1 will pass 5-0.
All right, may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Indeed, of four possible votes, four affirmative votes for cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special rate at the tax portion and describe. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in favor, in cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right.
Motion B2, Hume.
Second.
With the motion and the second, the roll call vote for the resolution of B2, starting with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The resolution of B2 will pass 5-0.
All right.
I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax, territory annex to community facilities District Number 2006 dash one. Maintenance Services Annexation Number 76 and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3 dot 19 dot 010.
Second.
With the motion and the second for the ordinance of motion B3, I'll start with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Ordinance of B3 will pass 5-0.
All right, we are on to our third public hearing, CFD 2006 dash one, Annex 76. I will declare that the public hearing for CFD 2006 dash one, Annex 76 is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
Again, no written comments. I'm looking over the list of our attendees. No raised hand functions are being utilized. That will conclude public comment for our third public hearing for Annex 76.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for CFD 2006 dash one, Annex 76 is now closed.
Move motion C1, Hume.
Second.
With the motion and the second for the resolution of C1, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of C1 will pass 5-0.
All right, may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Of three possible votes, three affirmative votes for cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate a portion and describe. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right.
Move C2, Hume.
Second.
With the motion and the second for the resolution of C2, move to the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of motion C2 will pass 5-0.
Move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to community facilities District Number 2006 dash one. Maintenance Services Annexation Number 76 and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3 dot 19 dot 010.
Second.
With the motion and the second for the ordinance of motion C3, the roll call vote will start with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The ordinance of motion C3 will pass 5-0. Everyone take a deep breath. We're through the heavy lifting. We just have three more to go, but they go faster.
All right, we're on our fourth public hearing, SMD 3 dash AF Annex 43. I would like to declare the public hearing for SMD 3 dash AF Annex 43 now open and open the public comment opportunity.
There are no prior written comments. I'm looking over our list of attendees in the Zoom audience. I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. And that'll conclude public comments for our fourth public hearing, SMD 3 Annex 43.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing for SMD 3 AF Annex 43 is closed.
Motion D.
And before that, there, there is no majority protest. So of three possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property, three affirmative votes were returned. The ballots prove the proposed assessment, the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration. And I did hear for motion D of motion by Win and a second by Suen for that resolution. With that, we will start the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of motion D will pass 5-0.
All right, we're on to our fifth public hearing, SWDF Zone 2 Annex 48. I would like to declare the public hearing for SWDF Zone 2 Annex 48 is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
Again, no written comments. I'm looking over our list of attendees in the Zoom audience and I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. That'll conclude public comment for our fifth public hearing here under 8.2 for SWDF Zone 2 Annex 48.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 48 is closed and request the clerk provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of four possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property. Four affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion E.
Second.
And with a motion and a second for the resolution of motion E, I will start with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of motion E will pass 5-0. Finish line.
All right, our last one. I would like to declare the public hearing for SWDF Zone 2 Annex 49 now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And again, no written comments were submitted prior to the meeting. I'm looking over our list of attendees in the Zoom audience. I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. That will conclude public comment for our sixth public hearing here under item 8.2 for SWDF Zone 2 Annex 49.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 49 is closed and request the clerk provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of three possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property. Three affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballot. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Second.
With a motion and a second for the resolution of motion F, I will start with Councilmember Win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of motion F will pass 5-0.
All right, on to our next item.
It'll take us on to section nine, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 9.1, which is to receive information regarding the city of Elk Grove 2021 COVID-19 Business Recovery Grant Program and consider a resolution adopting revised program policies, procedures and guidelines.
Okay, can you see my presentation?
I can, you're in the design mode. If you want to go to slideshow mode, that would be super. There it is.
All right, good evening. My name is Rachel Brown and I am Economic Development Manager here at the city. Tonight's item is to get an update on our round one of the 2021 COVID-19 Business Recovery Grant Program and consider making a few revisions to the program for this and a subsequent round. To go back just a brief history on on CARES Act funding, just to remind council and the public. Um, to go back just a brief history on, on CARES Act funding, just to remind council and the public, we did provide funding to the businesses in twenty twenty with CARES Act funding. Quick highlights of that program, we did two rounds of applications, hundred and eleven businesses received grants. Those grants totaled four hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars plus five hundred. And so, um, early in twenty twenty one, President Biden signed American Rescue Plan Act, which provided funds to cities. In August of twenty twenty one, Elk Grove City Council adopted a budget for the Elk Grove's planned funding, including four million dollars in this fiscal year to provide funds to businesses for a new grant program. September of twenty twenty one, city council adopted the resolution establishing the twenty twenty one program, which we made some revisions compared to the twenty twenty program that we did. Um, we opened the initial round of applications on October eleventh, twenty twenty one. We had a thirty day application period. It closed on November ninth, twenty twenty one. We did a wide variety of outreach efforts for this program. We did a citywide mailer that went out to about forty four hundred Elk Grove addresses, and that included both home-based businesses and commercial addresses. We did social media marketing. We did emails to approximately fifty two hundred businesses, both announcing the program and its go-live date, as well as during the application period with reminders of when the initial application period would conclude. We used assistance from regional and local chamber partners to share details of the program. I hosted a virtual technical assistance webinar, which explained the application process. We recorded that webinar, posted it on our website for applicants to, to use as a guide when trying to apply to the program. Also got a little creative, and I partnered with the Elk Grove Police Volunteers. They distributed, as well as our mayor, approximately three hundred and twenty flyers to local businesses. So, um, that was good to really try all, all means, you know, the mail, social media, and actually physically handing out flyers to local businesses. Uh, we had translation services made available, um, should someone need that assistance. We also had paper applications available, um, as well as a link to the application in our city hall lobby, the computer that we have available to the public. We had two hundred and seventy two applications received, and of those, a hundred and eighty six have been deemed eligible under the current guidelines. Those grants total one point two million, and of the two hundred and seventy two, seventy four were deemed ineligible. And I highlighted this, um, this bullet as to about half of the businesses were not eligible because of the twenty five percent revenue loss criteria that we had mentioned in the guidelines. That's a point that'll be on my next slide as a, as a item for discussion, as a potential revision. Um, the remainder of applications, you'll notice that eight, one eighty six and seventy four don't quite total two seventy two, but the, the remainder of applications are pending due to incomplete information from the applicant, so we're still working with them to try to remedy that. But we're, we're at a standstill with a few of those. Um, so what I'd like to suggest to the council tonight for consideration is to modify the twenty five percent revenue loss requirement. As I mentioned in the previous slide, um, about half of our denied applicants could have been eligible if this requirement was different. And, and so the twenty twenty revenue compared to twenty nineteen, in the way the guidelines are currently written, needs to be at the twenty five percent level. There was a wide range of people that did experience a loss, ranging from, let's say, one percent, all the way up to twenty two or twenty three percent. We're pretty strict with the twenty five percent, so even somebody that had a twenty four percent revenue loss, uh, was not eligible under our current guidelines. And so I'd like to request that we make it any revenue loss, so that could be back to that one percent, all the way up to the twenty four percent. We'd be able to allow about half of those, um, seventy some that were not eligible to become eligible. Um, the other modification, some businesses really struggled with submitting tax returns. So I'd like to broaden the acceptable financial documents to allow revenue and expense documentation other than tax returns. We would still prefer to get the tax returns i- if, if the business has those. Makes it pretty easy to synthesize the information and review it pretty quickly. Uh, and we're trying to turn around the applications to get the money out to the businesses soon as we can. Uh, but we would not eliminate the need for any financial documents. We would maintain, you either need tax returns or some other, um, financial documents that, that the city deems appropriate. Uh, these two changes, if council approves, would allow, like I mentioned, a few of the current round applicants to become eligible, and it could broaden the eligibility of, uh, other businesses in a future round. So options for council tonight, um, adopt the release, resolution to revise the program policies as included in the staff report. You could discuss other revisions that the council might like to see, or, um, you could elect not to make revisions to the program. That concludes my presentation. Wow, fiscal impact, sorry about that. But, um, we had identified the four million as already set aside in this fiscal year. We're not asking for additional funds at this time, so this doesn't impact the, uh, city budget in any way compared to the original four million dollar allocation. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you for that presentation, Ms. Brown. I will go ahead and open the public comment opportunity.
For our participating members in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to use the raise hand feature, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. There were no written comments submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item nine point one. But I will turn my attention over, and we do have a raised hand, and so I'll pull up the speaker timer now.
Angela Perry, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. Ms. Perry, you can go ahead. It just looks like you're still on mute.
Sorry about that.
Go right ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and council members. I am Angela Perry with the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce. First, I would like to rec, to commend staff, especially Rachel Brown, on their efforts in the first round of this program. Their extensive outreach and accessibility efforts were exceptional and resulted in double the applications and grant amounts provided during the twenty twenty program. Recovery continues slowly but surely in our city, but the issues of staffing shortages and inflation that go with it present further problems. Our business community has learned to adapt and pivot to the best of their abilities, but the damage has been done, and financial assistance is still sorely needed. In addition to the changes presented, we would like to see some consideration for those businesses who were brave enough to start up in the years during the pandemic, but have no historical data to support their losses. The Chamber of Commerce supports the program changes as presented by staff and respectfully recommends approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Are there any other callers?
And I do not see the raised hand function being used by any of our other attendees. That would conclude public comment under item nine point one.
All right, then I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Um, any questions for Ms. Brown? I'll start with, um, council member Hume.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question. Rachel, um, relative to the percentage loss, um, first of all, let me start by saying I, I think it's great that we, we had such good success in reaching people and, and so many, uh, businesses that were eligible and, and able to get that money out. Relative to the, uh, the percentage loss question, if a business, uh, shows a one percent loss, as you, as you mentioned, is one of the examples, then the grant that they would be eligible to receive would be to cover that one percent loss. Am I, am I tracking right? So if we were to choose the metric, obviously, then the relative amount that they were eligible to receive chases that metric. Is that right?
Um, that wasn't quite what I was presenting, but that could be an option. Uh, it would, we'd keep the same, um, grant amounts as was currently approved in the guidelines, and which was based off of their twenty nineteen annual revenue. We created, um, tiers, so there were some brackets, um, for the business types. I don't have the table handy to kind of bring it up, but there was, um, seven different grant amounts for, for different businesses, based on their type and their revenue.
Okay, so my memory of it is, is foggy. So then, do you have a, you know, back of the napkin idea what the lowest tier is?
I, I do. I actually have it right in front of me. But I don't have it electronically. I have a paper copy. So, um, the home businesses, we're getting five hundred dollars. It's just a flat amount. And then, um, we had non-targeted businesses. The grants ranged from thirty five hundred to ten thousand five hundred. And then targeted businesses had a range of five thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars in a grant amount.
Okay, so then, and I'm just trying to tease this out, if it were a quote unquote targeted business claiming a one percent loss, the most they could be eligible to receive would be fifteen thousand?
Correct, which is tied to their twenty nineteen annual revenue. So the idea was, the higher their revenue in twenty nineteen, the more grant amount they'd be eligible for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Spees.
So I just got confused with council member Hume's question there. So you're telling me that if a business lost one percent, that could equal a thousand dollars, but they're eligible to receive fifteen thousand? Is that, am I misunderstanding?
I guess there could be that example. So let's say a restaurant in twenty nineteen, um, had gross revenue of two million dollars. And by providing tax returns, they indicated a loss between twenty and twenty and twenty nineteen of one percent. They could be eligible for fifteen thousand dollars. The percentage loss isn't directly tied to their grant amount. I'm sorry if that was, um, not clear, but.
But their numeric loss is tied to what? So like, if you, if you lose fifty, if you lose five hundred dollars, you're, are you eligible to get fifteen thousand or is it five hundred? That's where I'm confused.
Potentially, right. The, the percentage loss or dollar loss does not, um, connect to the grant amount in any way. The grant amount is determined by their twenty nineteen annual gross revenue, just a flat amount. Cause we were trying to determine in, in twenty nineteen, um, we would presume the business, if they're in operation, was successful, economy was good, that was a good year for you. Twenty nineteen is probably a fair snapshot of how your business performs generally pre-pandemic. That may not always be a good snapshot, and so then, if you look at your twenty twenty revenue, how much did it hurt your bottom line was what we're trying to tease out with the information we collected from the applicant.
Okay, I'll, I'll listen to the other questions, because I'm still, I'm still not tracking on this. If, if I lost five hundred, I lost five hundred thousand, or if I lost five hundred dollars, I'm, I'm not understanding why the grant would be fifteen thousand.
Councilmember Spees and Hume, I think one of the suggestions, or one of the alternatives, or, uh, a recommendation could be to address that concern would be to cap the grant to that, the grant amount so that it's no more than the loss. So it would be, you'd be eligible for any one of those, you know, categories of, of grant amounts, but if you only had a loss of a thousand dollars, your grant amount is capped at a thousand dollars. You're not going to get, even if you're eligible for fifteen thousand dollars, you wouldn't get fifteen thousand dollars. So that would be an easy amendment that we could make to the suggestion.
Right. I mean, I, I'd like to hear what others have to say, but I, I think that sounds more reasonable. I mean, I'm not trying to be a Grinch, but you know, the, the, the remuneration should be equal to what their loss was. Right? Anyway, that's my perspective. Let me, uh, let me shut up and let everybody else go.
Councilmember Winn?
No, I, I felt the same way too. I feel like if you lost a certain amount, and this is to recover what you lost, you shouldn't be making money off of these grants. It, it should be based off of what, I like what, uh, city manager Brown said is that we cap it at what your loss is. So even though you're eligible for fifteen thousand, it's capped at what your loss equates to. I'm good with that change. I'm supportive of the program. As long as we add that in there, I would make a motion to move it.
Vice Mayor Soen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I echo, uh, sentiments of council member Winn's and my other colleagues as well. Uh, makes a lot of sense. So cap it, uh, as lesser of the two. The, uh, the amount or the, uh, the total loss. Um, I just wanted to back up and, uh, thank Rachel for her work on this and, and better enabling us to reach more, more people, um, with this grant. So the hardest part is trying to get the word out sometimes, and I think she, um, did a great job in trying to reach more, more people this go around. So, thank you.
Um, so Rachel, if we can get you back on, are you on the line?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, so I mean, my understanding of this is the bottom line is that you're trying to expand opportunities for eligibility. There was about seventy businesses who were just under that twenty five percent threshold, correct?
Um, probably about forty.
About forty. So this will then, whether it's one up to twenty four percent, whatever, there's a, there's potentially forty that fall in that bracket. So we're just looking to expand the eligibility and expand access to ARPA funding. Uh, because at the end of the day, when we got the funding, it wasn't, you know, we didn't have the, the restrictions put on by the federal government other than the hope and desire is to help businesses that have been impacted, um, through COVID. Do you feel like you have direction or a sense of clarity based on council comments? Um, because the goal is to expand access, not to make it more restrictive.
No, I feel comfortable with what the recommendation is. I think that's, um, as Jason said.
Because you're coming back to us because we, you clearly saw that there was a gap, and there were businesses who potentially should be getting grant funding, but because of our higher threshold of twenty five percent, um, by eliminating that, we expand the eligibility pool.
Correct. I think, um, as was mentioned by, uh, several council members, that revision would be easy enough to, to make. So we identified four million dollars for this program and didn't quite reach that threshold. So the thinking was, could we try to still get a few more grants, uh, awarded? And potentially with the second round, uh, have some broader, um, capability to give, you know, more money to a few more businesses. So
Yeah.
Simple enough to, to add that revision, uh, per council direction.
Yes, so I mean, I, I will echo the same comments and the goal again, expanding opportunities for businesses that are hurting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and which is the intent of all of this. So, um, did we have an active motion or are we looking for, uh, council member Hume?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second, uh, council members, uh, council member Winn's, uh, motion if it hadn't already been seconded. But I would like to ask for an amendment. So first of all, I'm glad that my question sponsored or spurred such dialogue here, because the, the, the goal is to expand the eligibility, but we also need to be responsible with taxpayer dollars, and it shouldn't be a quote unquote, um, a gift of, of funds. Um, so I, I like tying the eligible grant amount to the actual loss presented, um, up to whatever the tier, appropriate tier level is. But then I, I would also like to circle back, and this is where I would ask a, an amendment to the motion, is, uh, to the point that, uh, Ms. Perry from the chamber made relative to businesses who maybe started in late twenty nineteen or early twenty twenty, and then, uh, you know, COVID hit, and they've been able to, by the grace of God or whatever, uh, hang on, but don't necessarily. So if we're going to change the, uh, eligible documents, um, from tax returns, I would also look at, at that, that we, 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 you know, expand the scope to those businesses that, that wouldn't have had the, the tax returns to, to bolster their claims previously.
I had another question as well, too. So we were talking about the twenty five percent, the other, the other, uh, batch of small, or businesses that didn't qualify because they didn't meet the twenty five percent threshold, and you said it was about forty percent of those that applied that met the threshold of loss of twenty five percent or more, right? And if we were, we're putting this amendment in there for them not to be granted funding over the amount of what their loss is, have, has there been any notice out to those others yet that, um, qualified? And does that change your number? Now that we put this amendment in there of how much money you have? I just, I don't know if the ones that qualified were getting more than what they lost.
I'd have to look back at the, um, my tracking sheet to see of the grants awarded. Does that affect anybody that's already received money? I, I'm not sure on, on the fly here.
Yeah, so I, I don't know how, um, we can change that, because that means those that that, that were already approved and were over the twenty five percent, they might have received funding over the amount of what their loss was, right?
That, that could have occurred.
Yeah, we can't penalize that, which we've already allocated. This now just expands the eligibility pool without being punitive. Potentially.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, you know, I don't know. I feel like that, like if we did that already with that first batch and now we're we're putting some restrictions on there, um, and, and those that lost that, that made it through that first round are now going to, I, I mean, I don't know. I guess we don't have the numbers to see how much of that.
Mr. Berman, did you want to add to this?
I was just gonna say, I think Rachel's right. We don't know until we look at the numbers, but it's probably less likely under the current round one program because they required a twenty five percent loss. And based on the grant amounts that we awarded, it's less likely that somebody were, was granted more than, uh, their, their loss. When you go down to a one percent or a five percent loss, I think the chances of that happening go up significantly. So um, we can, we can take a look at it, but it's probably, um, much less likely under the, the first round. And then, um, to Pat's, I think, second point or request on those businesses that started during the pandemic. I'm not sure that that would be eligible under the, the ARBA guidelines because it requires a loss. It had, this is specifically tied to, to COVID. Um, and it's comparing kind of pre-COVID to post-COVID. So that's something that we'd need to look into to see if there's some kind of grant program that could be put together that was specifically for those businesses that started operation in, uh, you know, during the pandemic. But as of today, I don't think we're comfortable, um, moving that forward.
Fair enough.
Then that was, thank you. I was gonna bring that up, that as I recall, that we had to show a loss. And so if there's
Rachel, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, um, even some people haven't finished their twenty twenty taxes and some of the businesses we're reviewing. So, um, to say that, um, we had enough information to look at it to paint that picture of a loss, it would get interesting with the years we've chosen to review and then try to do that look back. There's nothing, as Jason said, to compare it to. Be really tricky. I like the idea of a, um, future program considering them standalone.
For new businesses or?
Or if, you know, businesses starting twenty twenty, if we wanted to try to do something for them, I like the idea of a separate something that we could cater to that. Maybe it's not with the ARPA funds. I'm not sure.
Yeah, because with the ARPA, it does have those restrictions as, uh, Mr. Bearman mentioned.
Uh, we can, we can look at the ARBA guidelines and see if it would qualify. We'll be, we'll be coming back with another report, uh, for you at the end of February. And we can report back at that time if, if a program like that would be eligible under the guidelines.
Okay.
But we want to get the second round out as quickly as we can, um, with, with the existing program that we're talking about with the amendment that's been suggested by council member win.
So we can take action on council member wins and, um, with, um, consideration here for council member Hume's amendment, hold off on, on that until a further report. Would you like to withdraw that, Mr. Hume?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. Absolutely.
Okay. So our active motion on the floor is council member wins with the added criteria, but with the intent that we're expanding opportunities for business to get more funding. So we have a motion and is that still a second council member Hume?
It is.
Okay, very good.
And with that, we will move to the roll call vote for the resolution of item nine point one, starting with council member win.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Soon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The amended resolution for item nine point one will pass five oh.
All right, next item, please.
Take us on to item nine point two, which is to receive an update on city council priority projects.
All right, welcome, Mr. Jordan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you. Just a moment here. All right. So the item before you this evening, uh, this is a receiving file item with an update on the council's priority projects. As you are aware, we come back about every six months and give you a report on the prior six months' work. Uh, this stems from the city mission, vision, goals and priority projects you established to retreats almost a year ago. Um, so this covers the reporting period for essentially July through December of last year. Uh, just a real quick recap for those that are listening in or may not be familiar, the city's mission statement provides for providing exceptional services and enhance the quality of life for our residents and promote a thriving economy in an efficient and cost-effective manner. On the vision side, uh, the city prioritizes the superior quality of life for all that builds upon the community's diversity and heritage through safe, welcoming and connected neighborhoods with a variety of residential, educational, employment choices and amenities that create a sense of place. There are four city goals that are implementing the vision and mission statement. Uh, each of those is identified by a logo that's here up on the screen. Uh, these four goals speak to a vibrant community and sustainable economy with diverse businesses and amenities, a safe and resilient community, a high performing and financially stable city government, and a city with infrastructure that meets its current and future needs. We won't be going through the full list of projects this evening because there are thirty of them and there are various stages of completion and work effort. Uh, but we do want to highlight as part of this update, a couple, uh, specific projects and where they've landed and been completed over the last few months. Um, but broadly, these thirty priority projects are organized into five activity areas of civic amenities, transportation, community development, community safety and city operations. Uh, so those that we'd like to highlight for you this evening, uh, first off is the Preserve at District Fifty Six that opened in November. Uh, really excited by having that component of the District Fifty Six complex now completed and opened to the public. Uh, it's been getting great reviews and a lot of active use from our residents. Uh, next up, you received an update in December on the, uh, design for the relocation of the Elk Grove Old Town Library. Uh, that work is continuing. You can see the floor plan that we presented to you in January. And we'll have more updates for you, uh, likely at the end of February or early March on the status of that project and getting the design finalized. Other capital projects completed, uh, camera road widening, reconstruction from Light Ranch Parkway to Bruceville is now completed and open. Um, so you can see just a simple snapshot of that here and what it looks like with the median improvements along a portion of it. Work has begun on the Laguna Creek Interregional Trail Master Plan. Um, Mr. Bearman identified, I think, in the GA report earlier, uh, an outreach opportunity that's occurring with that coming up. So certainly encourage folks to look at that. Um, here you can see photos of a walking audit that was occurring was part of the project earlier this fall. Uh, some of you are aware, we're working on bringing in partnership with the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission, ACE and Amtrak Service to Elk Grove with a new train stop. Uh, this will be overall on the West Side Rail Line and concert with UP's, uh, desire and available capacity for service. The environmental impact report for that project was issued by the San Joaquin Commission, uh, in December. Uh, comments closed, I believe, earlier this week or last week. They're currently going through those and we're expecting that they'll have final project approval at the commission later this year and begin working on the construction design and right away acquisition for the project. Uh, you'll recall at your last meeting, uh, you adopted the smart city plan, connected Elk Grove. Well, in December, we released that for public review and comment. Uh, so just highlighting that quickly. And then lastly, uh, we begin in partnership with Consumer's Community Services District and, uh, engaging with a community engagement firm to understand broadly community needs and priorities and opportunities. And that's a conversation that will be continuing on this calendar year. A variety of other projects, of course, continue. I'll just identify a quick five up here on the screen, White Lock Parkway Interchange, Elk Grove Boulevard Streetscape Phase Two, essentially from School Street to Waterman. Project Elevate, uh, very excited. We were able to get the offering memorandum out to the development community earlier this month. So you'll hear more about that in our next update. Uh, the camera road urban design study is continuing, working on draft materials and the traffic analysis. And, uh, we are beginning work on understanding broadband, broadband capacity uh, and needs across the community and opportunities to expand that in the future. Uh, so that concludes our presentation this evening. If you have any questions, uh, staff's available for, uh, answering them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I will open up the public comment opportunity.
For our members in the attending audience in the Zoom environment, now would be the opportunity to use the raised hand function for public comment on item nine point two. Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, there were no written comments that were submitted in relation to item nine point two prior to the meeting. As I take my attention to our list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. That will conclude public comment under item nine point two.
All right. I'll close the public comment opportunity and open it up for any council comments. This is just, uh, receiving information. So no action, just, uh, love to hear your thoughts if you have any to offer for Mr. Jordan or us. I see Mr. Hume's camera is on, so we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you, uh, CJ for your update there. And while I appreciate the brevity, uh, given some of the lengthy items we've already heard tonight, certainly you brushed over a lot of really cool stuff that's going on. And, uh, it's an exciting, uh, time in the near future. Um, things that are in progress and, and things that are still kind of yet to, to be fully realized. So, um, appreciate the update. Thank you.
Uh, let's see, council member win, any questions, comments?
No question, no comments. Thank you for the update.
Councilmember Spees.
I have no, uh, questions or comments either, but thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate it.
Vice Mayor, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Christopher, just want to echo, uh, comments, council member Hume. I appreciate the update and all the good work that's going on at the city. Uh, just really excited to be a part of it. Thanks.
Um, my, my comments on this great presentation, I love reading the staff report. Um, I enjoyed what you presented here this evening. Um, I know that I continue and I am sure my colleagues um, get regular emails and comments perhaps when they're out and about. Um, and that's, uh, for item number, um, C six. That's in the staff report. And that is, um, implementing programs that address homelessness in Elk Grove. So I do look forward to getting more updates, um, as we have identified that is our council, uh, priorities and goals to proactively address homelessness. Um, these are all great projects, great things to celebrate. Um, but of course, being mindful that we still have, uh, work to do in some key areas and it is indicated in there in the staff report um, in progress. So, uh, I do want to recognize that, but um, to the residents that can, uh, that can, you know, that chime in and submit comments. Um, I hear you and I know that my colleagues hear you on this issue as well. There's a lot of moving parts and a lot of, lot of good things that we are doing. And of course, um, as a lifelong learner, there's continuous improvement. So I have nothing else to add to that. Um, hearing no other comments or questions. Thank you again, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right. So we will go on to our next item, which is council comments reports, future agenda items. I will start with council member win.
Sorry, took some time to figure out how to open up my screen. Um, I, you know, I want to thank our community for showing support to Officer Ty Linnahan's family. Um, we did a really nice vigil that was organized by, um, the cab member Joy Yip. And, um, I know there's another one that's being planned for tomorrow night as well, too, as city manager Berman had mentioned, I hope to see many of you there. Just as a wife of an Elk Grove police officer, uh, we, we, and I say we, I mean, my, my husband, um, and his, you know, they, they see the support and I hope that our community continues to support them. It's a tough time for, for all of us. And, um, you know, I, I think more so now than ever, ever, the community, um, showing their support means so much to them. So I do want to thank our community members for coming out and showing their love and their support for our department, for our city and for Officer Ty Linnahan's family. I will say I'm working with, um, Pop's Premium Meet. Uh, they're working on putting an event together where he would barbecue meats. And, um, hopefully the community come and support it and that, uh, we'll be able to give all the proceeds, is what he said, uh, back to the family. And so I'm working with him on that along with our police department. I mean, then, you know, as you know, Lunar New Year is, is coming up. And both council member Darren Soon and I celebrate the Lunar New Year. Folks have always called it Chinese New Year and I've tried real hard, we've tried real hard to educate the community that it's not just the Chinese community that celebrate Lunar New Year. It's the Vietnamese community, the Korean community and the Mian community. And we both received, uh, several emails and phone calls and community members just reaching out to ask and asking if there's anything that was going to take place here in our city. As you saw the census and the increase in EPI community members in our city. And so both council members soon and I will be holding a, um, a small little, uh, Lunar New Year event at the Preserve. And we will have lion dancers there and some little gifts for kids to wish them good luck. You don't have to be Asian to attend, anybody can attend. And we hope that you bring your kids because we have red envelopes with chocolate gold coins inside so that you can feed the lion for good luck. Um, I'll leave it there because I think, uh, Vice Mayor Darren Soon may have more to say as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Councilmember Spees, anything to report or comments? We lose you, councilmember Spees. I'll come back to councilmember Spees, uh, councilmember Hume.
Hi, um, nothing to report. Most of my, uh, meetings have just been very brief, uh, meetings to get together to issue whatever resolution that's required to maintain virtual meetings. Um, but I do have, uh, a connector meeting and a San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting coming up this, uh, Friday. And again, I just would like to, uh, kind of circle back to, to what council member, uh, when started her comments relative to the outpouring of community support. You know, we had the procession come through town uh, the other day and, uh, went by and stopped and saw the memorial for Officer Linnahan and, and just, um, uh, it, it's, it's heartening to see, uh, the outpouring of love. And I hope that, uh, what Stephanie said is true. That the officers do feel it and, and do know that we're, we're standing there with them. And, um, and, and that we will get through this, um, but it's a, it's a reminder of how, how delicate, uh, our life situation is. And so, um, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so, um, I, I just want folks to know that I'm, I'm still sad, still angry. And for those of you that know me well, that's usually the time that is not appropriate for me to talk because I start using words that are unbecoming. Um, but what's, what's, what's difficult is, um, finding the way to move on. Um, because it almost seems, um, it, it just seems wrong, you know? Um, but I know that, that will, will, will heal and I, I, I think of um, his family all the time. Um, and the sacrifice that he's given. And so, um, with that, I, all I can think of are those words I probably shouldn't use. So I'll turn my time on to you.
Vice Mayor, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I also want to offer my own, you know, recognition and appreciation of, of outpouring of community support. You know, at, at the procession yesterday, uh, several of us got to, uh, hear from, uh, our, our PD officers about the amount of coordination that it, it took to, to, um, to organize and, 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 uh, staff that procession and how many, uh, community or law enforcement officers from around the region, uh, were helping out in that effort. And so I know it meant lots to the family, it means a lot to all of us, uh, as community leaders and representatives. And so I just want to um, extend that appreciation and, and thanks. And, uh, to councilmember Spees's point, you know, there's, there's really no, um, words, I think, that can take away the, the pain. Um, but I, I just hope that, um, you know, uh, the family, um, Jessica and his children, Austin and Sydney and, uh, all his brothers and sisters within Elk Grove PD, um, just are able to, to, to see how much Officer Linnahan tie means to all of us, uh, the entire community and everything that he represents. So thank you very much. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, wow. I mean, you've all said it so beautifully in your own respective words. Our community, of course, is is in mourning. We're wounded, we're broken, as the chief has said over the last several days. We are, of course, grieving together. We are, of course, grieving together. But we'll also heal together. And it's through that love and support and the network that is Elk Grove that um, will get us through these sad times. To council member Spies' point, um, I'm angry. We're all angry. This could have been avoided. This should not have happened. Those little children should have their dad. It's hard to make sense out of these senseless tragedies. So the best we can do in, in these great moments of sorrow is to look for the goodness in our community, the, the goodness in all of us. And remember what's most important in life. It's not all those things that divide us. Because each day is a gift. We don't know how any of us, how long, we, we are going to be here. So the best we can do is to be there for each other and see our common humanity and all of those great things that bring us all together. It's really that's what's great, not only in Elk Grove, but really it's, it's the plea for everyone, everywhere. Is to see the goodness in everyone, to be kind, to create a community that's filled with love, support and kindness. Um, that's what we're, a lot of us are here for. And sometimes it takes a tragedy to wake us all up, to remember what's most important in life. It's our family, it's our friends, it's our community. So as we adjourn, um, as I adjourned this meeting in the memory of Officer Lennahan, I want to give a huge shout out and thank you to all of our men and women in uniform who go out every day to serve faithfully in keeping communities safe. We thank you. Your service does not go unnoticed. We thank you. To Sacramento Police Department and the Sacramento Sheriff's Department who stepped in so that our officers could grieve, could breathe as a family. We thank you. And we thank all of our regional leaders and everyone and our community for their outpouring of support for being there for all of us. We thank you. For tonight, I painfully will be adjourning tonight's meeting at eight thirty-two in the memory of Officer Ty Lennahan. Thank you for your service. Good night.